Call the September seventeenth city council meeting order. Commissioner Smith, would you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day please, sir?
Our Father, once again we come for your presence. Thankful for this opportunity to serve as servants of your city. We ask for your to continue to lead God and direct us in all that which you say and do, and pleasing and accepting your sight. Bless all those heavenly Father in the chambers this afternoon. Bless O God, their coming O God, help us O God to be good stewards of what you have presented to us. This is your prayer in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on September seventeenth seventeen eighty-seven, the Constitution of the United States of America is signed by thirty-nine delegates present at the conclusion of the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia. Supporters of the document wage a hard-won battle to win ratification by necessary nine out of thirteen United States states. Fact of the day.
All right. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon, evening, please make sure that you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and city staff encourage constructive criticism. However, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. Okay. We got, uh, public comments.
Okay. Rod Olson.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. I am frustrated and became more frustrated when an article fell out of the, out of my file dated December of two thousand nineteen when I talked to you about infrastructure, talked to you about schools and so forth and the lack of common sense growth. Uh, in two thousand twenty-four, July twenty-four, I sent you eight things that if we done any of them, we'd be a better city today. One, increased development fees, didn't happen. Create a citizens committee to go over budgets, didn't happen. Monthly department head financial reviews, didn't happen. Report a monthly budget performance by, at city council, didn't happen. Replace water meters or do live checks, didn't happen. Present Camp Weewa break-even plan, if not the lost lead plan for Camp Weewa. By mid-January, present a budget plan. Everyone has the time and time to look at and actually analyze and look at the numbers. By mid-January, present a twenty-year strategic plan. None of this happened. Apopka will continue to grow. We want smart growth. Staff turnover, flooding, streets, sidewalks, utility billing, budget performance, developer-friendly atmosphere, the lack of infrastructure plagues our city. We must have a change in direction. If we hadn't operated, operating water meters, would we even had a weight increase right now? Three years we've been talking about those darn water meters and they're still not fixed. We have a limited street budget. And yet, one of the top three neighborhoods, you know, I cruised the community as in my volunteer work, is, is Emerson Park. Emerson Park is one of the finest streets overall. I ride about through there Monday, what? They're repaving this, all the streets and the alleys. And I go through hundreds of streets that have potholes and other issues. This is just, it's unbelievable. You continue to approve new developments within two miles of a school zone and no safe means for the kids to get to the schools. Our budget process is a joke. Commissioners and citizens lack timely information to dissect and ask questions and make informed decisions. City administrator, finance director, and the mayor present different numbers and all of you look at each other like, whoa, what? Is that real? Wait, no. Where did that come from? How many staff are wearing two hats right now? How many staff are we short? It was eighty-two, went down to sixty-six. What's the number today? Apopka is sailing without a compass. We must establish a strategic plan, follow it, and hold you and the staff accountable. I have a couple of minutes, so I'm trying to switch up my gears a little bit. I pledge to and encourage all the public commenters to find something good that at least happened the last two weeks in the city to present. I'm gonna say first off, Commissioner Velazquez and Nesta, who always come to the meetings early, they stay till the last person leaves. I wish everyone would do that. Also want to thank our sanitation team and our fleet maintenance team for the fine work they do to the city. Thank you.
Sylvester Hall.
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. It's been over a year and a half. And I, I come up here and I say these same things. I say them because we need to hear them and we need to hear them over and over and over again. Because something is happening in our world today that if we don't wake up. Everybody in here just stood up and said, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And we say that and it rolls right off our tongue so smoothly and so nicely. But we know it's not true today. So where we have become as a country. So when I say to you, in the city of Apopka, the state of Florida, and in our country, too many good people are standing by watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. It's time for us to stand up against hate. It's time for us to stand up against corruption. It's time for us to stand up against racism. We've been rolling along with all three. And we see how the country is heading. Let's give love a try. Let's give love a try. We all supposed to be Christian. And the simplest thing God asks us to do is to love our neighbor as he loved us. Take care of the poor. Very simple demands. When we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth to the point the truth doesn't matter. Look where we at now. Look where we at now. And we all come in here and we'll leave as though nothing in the world is going on. Well, we understand that anytime we elect any official, principles matter, integrity matters, honesty matters, accountability matters, responsibility matters, mores matter, ethics matter, character matters, procedures matter, leadership matters, laws matter, justice matters, and all God's people matter. We have to look at ourselves and decide how we want to live and how we want to move forward in this country. Because if we don't, the last time we had the Civil War, it was most deadly war we ever had. And it was on our soil. And it was all because of hate. One man want to rule over another. So I say to everybody who can hear my voice, you have a choice in how you live, your kids live, and your grandkids live. Thank you.
Okay, Albert McKimmy.
Albert McKimmy, three-six oh-three Golden Gem Road. I come here pretty regularly. I don't come here to offer your opinion. I come here to offer you, offer you documented facts. These are from your public records. The problem is, this last few weeks, once again, we have been denied access to public records. I requested public records this week or last week through some third party about activities with the commissioners. No reason we couldn't get them because it would have only taken ten, fifteen minutes to, to, to supply the information. We've asked for information regarding the costs of overseeing and reworking Golden Gem Road. We've asked for information on how much money you've spent to date on Golden Gem Road. Believe it was about a year ago, there was some information where out of the nine hundred and fifty thousand that you paid Devo Saran, that only sixteen thousand of that was left over. That means we spent over nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I'm still interested to find out what we spent on. Problem is, on your own budget sheets, there's a line item here with, uh, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, the stage door construction, re-Golden Gem Road. What was that for? It's probably for Phil. It could be for some of the machinery that they, they supplied. But the question is, why won't you tell me? Why every time I ask about how much money you've spent, do you refuse to give me the information? Have you got something to hide? Yeah. Because I can tell you where that material came from. It came from a demolition site on four thirty-six. I have the videos. And next week, when I come, or two weeks time, I actually intend to bring the video shown, where, where it went. Now, the mayor denied me the right to show the videos before. He said I put subtitles on it and they were inappropriate because it, it, it was accusing members of staff. So this time, I'm gonna remove the subtitles. And I want you to make sure that when I bring that video, next city hall meeting, I get the opportunity to show you, I get the opportunity to show the public what went into the hole at Golden Gem Road. Yeah, that's one thing. Now, for the last three years I've come here, and I give you figures of what I interpret is going to cost for things. I look back, three years ago, I had, came here with Commissioner Becker was here. And I told you, Golden Gem Road to re-surface it was gonna cost between ten and fifteen million. You laughed at me, said, no, it's about two million dollars worth of work, just a million dollars a mile. Now we're seeing fifteen thousand dollars. What you're now gonna find is you're gonna have to spend twenty-five million dollars on Golden Gem Road. And I don't see anywhere in your budget where you're, you're showing that information and projecting it for the future. I'll speak about it later.
Virginia Street.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners. Um, first, um, I want to thank you for everything that you do in supporting the unhoused and the needy. Um, families in the, in the city of Apopka, especially on, uh, I want to point out one occasion, uh, on Labor Day, when, uh, need arise. And, um, at the last minute, I reached out to two commissioners, Commissioner Nesta and Commissioner Smith, that ensured that the needs were met. Uh, pizza, drinks, snacks, more than what I asked for, was, uh, given, uh, to support the unhoused that day. Um, normally, they would have been taken care of at Next Step Ministries, but because it was a holiday, it was, they, that was canceled. But at the last minute, they called and I appreciate, uh, your support. I want to be able to say that publicly, that I appreciate your support and everything you do for the community. And each one of them, and Commissioner Smith, you were there. Each one of them were very grateful for what you took out your time on a holiday to take care of. Um, secondly, um, I'd like to talk about the Resource Center. Um, we haven't had it back on the agenda. We, we talked about it once, but it never came back. I'd like, uh, for some point to have it put back on the agenda, to have some discussion about, you know, if not the location over there behind the, where the dog, um, um, track is. If not back there, then where? And, uh, what are our plans long-term for creating a resource center in Apopka? Um, I have kind of taken it upon myself to, uh, build a relationship with them. And, uh, within the last two weeks, I have four people that have successfully, uh, became employed because I have taken the time just to help them fill out applications, um, just to help them have mock interviews. I have taken the time to sit with them because those are the resources they need, not just food and clothing for the day. Um, so I ask you to continue to add that resource center. I don't want to, I'm, I'm not gonna leave it alone. I want that resource center in Apopka to help those that want to help themselves. You know, that's what Matthew's Hope does. But w- we can, we can have the same resource center here to help our own. And then thirdly, about the location of where the sleeper buses are gonna be. Uh, I know Matthew's Hope is still working on that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Penny Wise.
Good evening. We've had some beautiful weather. They used to call it Chamber of Commerce weather when I was growing up. We've had some great charities in, in Apopka, big ones and little ones. And they've been serving great purposes. Uh, I have brought up in the past, um, over the last couple of years, since FDAC's Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services has started their, um, public front to let you know the citizens, um, how we evaluate, how charities perform and how much is spent on the services, what a charity does for its mission. There are numbers at the federal level for big charities that you can check out at Christmas time, et cetera. Um, and when you get your taxes back and what you want to spend out there. Um, FDAC's Check a Charity, um, link is for Florida residents to see about every nonprofit, whether it's tax exempt or not. And you can go look up the name of a charity and find out how much they give, um, to services or how much they waste on administration or advertising. And at the national level, when I work on a charity or international level, we like to think eighty-five percent or above is good. Ninety percent is excellent. And a hundred percent is a good goal, is a great goal. Um, and I've been in organizations that for twenty-five years or more have been four-star, four-star. And we're, it's very hard in Florida, in Apopka, to get people, charities to register. Um, what we need to do is make sure when we're evaluating charities and people that come up here and want to ask for money or to be on park property or city property or, uh, and do a, a parade or an event, that they're registered as a nonprofit and that they, uh, when they ask for money in a donation, which I've said twice now since we've brought up the donations, that they meet certain levels. And I know that, um, the committee, um, asked that we set standards for that. Um, and these charities that may not have met them, that y'all are gonna talk about later. And I may or may not be able to last that long. Um, so we need to set standards and I think, um, we need to pull that item from the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, Ace Woodham.
Ace Woodham of Apopka. I've come up here tonight to speak a little bit different than, than having the past. The city has owned a piece of property that's well above half a million dollars now for two-point-five acres, two and a half acres. I've asked Radley about it. I've, I've, for the times got bad, uh, asked the mayor about it. It's Conley property on Dream Lake. It's a very beautiful piece of property, taxpayers own it. It's got a black six-foot chain-link fence all the way around it. The houses ain't up with termite, needs to be demolished and tore out. But why is not the citizens allowed to use something they own? Why is holding it up? If it's called, y'all wasting enough money on legal fees and everything else. Why can't we get something back? And as far as the Conley property, I mean, the, um, other property looking for to help the homeless, the old, um, building behind, the Cobb building here, y'all own it now, if I'm not mistaken. It's got bathrooms in, it's got water, it's got electricity. Why can't that be utilized for taking care of the homeless? It's right here in a central location. It's away from residential areas. It's within a monitoring of the APD. But y'all refuse to do anything with it. You got a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars grant that you received that was taken and used to help balance the budget. Well, these people out there, they got, they got a budget of fifteen cent a day, maybe. They could use that money, they could use a place. And there's some of them you can't help. Some of them wants to be exactly where they're at. But some of them fell on hard times and ended up where they didn't want to be. The other thing, the property right next to it, south of it there, the corner lot, is for sale. I believe the, um, I believe that the Cobbs own that property still, too. The city has failed to even offer to buy that. They, they, it's been offered to the city. I don't understand that. Y'all are looking for expanding the police department, fire department, and doing the things out here in town. But, and then you let some prime piece of property slip away that could be utilized for expansions. And then I see code enforcement officers riding down the street, getting on people because they got a piece of rusty metal up on the eve of their house. And they're gonna find them for that. Well, I drive down Forest Avenue here and look at the Con, the, um, Cobb building. Windows are broken in it, weed's grown up, the roof is falling apart. Got cages over the windows, plywood nailed up here or there, trash and everything. And the city owns it.
Thank you. Leroy Bell.
Leroy Bell of Apopka. Like Rod Olson, I myself is kind of, I don't understand this city no more. We come in here every meeting night, ma'am, you speak about decorum. A few months back, I got up and spoke. Commissioner got up and walked out on me. Commissioner Nesta, last meeting, got up and walked out. The very same commissioner walked out on me. Got up and gonna take it in her own to go out and get that man, which was his right. You have nothing to say about that. What about the decorum? This street just got up and spoke about giving the people somewhere to stay. You have misused a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, just what Ace Woodham just spoke about. Sylvester Hall got up a couple of meetings ago and he mentioned the N-word. Two of the commissioners up there, they know who they are, sent out emails all across town. All got their little panties in the water, trying to figure out what's going on. They was irritated, they was mad. But they wasn't mad, they didn't try to figure out what happened to the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. They weren't trying to figure out what happened to the young man that was tased and beat. They, they weren't outraged about that. They weren't outraged about the young man that beat up Jason Friend. They wasn't outraged, they weren't outraged about that. Everybody stand up and talk about how strong America we got. Ain't nobody outraged about the, the direction of this city and what it's going. I'll leave that there. And like Rod Olson, I'm, I'm gonna say something kind of constructive. We are having, well, there's something good for the city that in March, we're gonna have an election. And I'm sick and tired of seeing you, ma'am, playing politics. Instead of running the city, you and Christine Moore is out here battling with each other about a position that neither one of you guys deserve.
Anybody else? That's good? Okay. Sure. Come on down. Anybody else?
Oh. Do we have somebody else? I don't have any more cards.
Come on.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Tina James. Hello, I'm Tina. I'm a scout from Girl Street Four to Eleven.
Speak up, speak up.
Um, I'm a, uh, I'm a scout from Girl Street Four to Eleven, and I'm currently working on my Eagle project, and I'm building a dog obstacle course by Doc, or at Doctor's Dog Park. And it'll have three obstacles. It'll have an A-frame, um, an archway run, and an adjustable jumping bar. And I'm doing this project because I feel like it could really bring a lot of people into the community, and it could also benefit the dog's health, including, and even the people's health. And, um, it could help, it could help them, uh, seek new challenges, gain new agility skills, and even more. It also helps build dogs' confidence, and it helps them better bond with their owners. So I feel like that could be a really, um, good thing to bring into the community. I also feel like it could bring more people outside and, um, bring people together while they're, um, while, if they have, like, more things to do at the dog park than just have a field. But this project is gonna be costing a lot of money. The project in total will cost, um, two thousand nine hundred dollars. And so far, I've only raised one thousand two hundred eighty-four from fundraising. I did a bunch of garage sales, car washes, and it's still not enough. So I would like to ask for, um, a donation. I'm only asking for six hundred for the materials and tools that I'll need because, and, um, I'm trying to get the money in before, um, winter, so I can get it started. And I have the, I have the pictures of the obstacles for all of you, um, if you need a copy. And, yeah.
Awesome. So do you have your name and address? Is it on the, on your, your information there?
I can write it down.
Yeah. Oh, you got, okay, got, okay, yeah, all right. If you just want to hand that in to the clerk then, and we will make sure that all the commissioners get a copy of that. Look forward to obstacle cars. I think my dogs are too old to be able to jump up over anything. But, uh, thank you for coming out tonight. Anybody else? Okay. Approval of minutes. Any changes to the minutes? Have not looked for a motion to approve the minutes, red?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries now. Radley?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I do have a couple items for agenda review consideration. First off, we did have two items that were advertised for tonight's meeting, but at the request of the applicants, uh, were not put on the agenda. That was for Wild Oaks Town Center District Overlay and for nineteen-twenty Sheila Road Future Land Use Amendment and Rezoning, second reading. They were requested to be, uh, pulled from the meeting tonight, and when they are brought back, they'll have to be re-advertised. So just an item of information since they were advertised.
What were the numbers of those? Because I, I did look for them.
They're not on the agenda. They were advertised though for the meeting, so just for public information, they are not on the agenda at the request of the applicants. And so when we do bring, when the applicant is ready to bring them back, we will have to re-advertise. Uh, next, uh, I apologize for the late email, but I did send, uh, and provide some copies of a staff report and a final Sixth Amendment for the memorandum of, uh, M O A with Saint John's River Water Management District for the Golden Gem Pond. The, uh, Saint John's River Water Management District, uh, does need this, um, extension approved and signed for September thirtieth. So that's why I've brought that tonight to see what the pleasure of the council is. If you'd like to add that to the agenda for discussion and on consideration tonight, or if you would rather call a special city council meeting prior to the September thirtieth. I do know, uh, based off of prior meetings, discussions, it probably would be like Monday, the twenty-ninth, uh, possibly. Um, so just looking for some guidance from the council on how you'd like to proceed with that item.
Radley, for everybody's, you know, benefit, we only got that.
Yeah, so quick turnaround and, um, so that's why I apologize for the delay getting it.
As in yesterday afternoon?
Yeah, it was, it was a quick, it was a quick turnaround.
So, yeah, so I just, just so it's, it's not, we've sprung this on you, it's just Saint John's had their, their meeting, and we, they finally got it to us. And so that was, first we found out was yesterday afternoon. So that's the only reason we're bringing it forward today. Um, and we can, have, absolutely happy to bring it forward, um, on a special, uh, council meeting on the twenty-ninth. If that works, or we can take it up now. And I, I think it's more of a formality, what we've kind of all agreed to. And Cliff, if you, you, what, what's the pleasure? Or do you want Cliff to have, have him, um, bring it forward? And then we decided it's too much, too complicated, then we can, okay, all right.
Uh, basically, as I, I think you may recall, we've had an ongoing agreement with, uh, Saint John's, but they, they have six months increments. And, uh, that have to be renewed if Saint John's is not ready to move forward. We got to the end of this last one, uh, or will at the end of this month, and they are requesting, it's their request, an additional six months. And so they put together the amendment and sent it over and said, we've approved it. Can y'all get it approved and sign it back to us? So there's no lapse, uh, before the September thirtieth date. So as soon as I got it, I forwarded it to the city and said, can we put this on as a walk-on? What it essentially does is extend the time for us to work out whatever we're going to do with the property and with Saint John's, whose other, only other option, if we don't work with them, is to take the property back, I think. And that's one of their, one of the considerations. And so they want more time, they asked for the extension. I assume because we've done it recently, relatively recently, you know, six months ago, that it would be not a big deal. But if it is, we can have a special meeting for it. That's up to you guys.
Questions for Cliff?
Well, you know, Golden Gem has been a hot topic, so I would, I would recommend that we have a kind of a workshop so that, um, we can kind of discuss. Because I know that the staff has been meeting with Saint John's over the last, I guess, two or three months.
Yeah, uh, uh, the staff's been continually meeting with, uh, Public Works and Utilities, they've been continually meeting with Saint John's, uh, River Water Management District and their staff. And they've been working well. And really, the highlight of this extension is, if you look on Exhibit B, those are the, basically, deliverables that were, that are outlined for this next period. And we are, um, we're actually ahead on a couple of them already.
As, when you say we are a couple ahead, you have from A through I, and then number two, you have?
Correct, and I believe it was two A and two B already completed.
And Commissioner Blaskin, because we can't do a workshop, it has to be.
Be a meeting.
We have to.
A workshop with a special meeting.
Special meeting, yeah, okay.
Right, I'm, I'm saying that. Um, I guess it would be a special meeting so that each of the commissioners have, um, a full comprehension of what we are agreeing to.
Yeah, I, I had attended this, the, the meeting where they did approve this last week. It was, I think, September ninth, last Tuesday up in Platteck, I drove up there. And just to see if there is dialogue about it and, and any can, specific concerns that the district had specific to this. And, um, one note that they had said, and it's not specific to this, but, and I guess I'll bring this up too during kind of our water talk, is they're, they're just concerned about wastewater. It is one that ironically enough, we don't have enough of. Uh, so they're wanting more of that and, and that to be in our plans as they start to, uh, approve more projects similar to this and, and as cities build out. So just something to think about as we move forward. But I do think it, it makes sense, especially for the residents that have shown a lot of concern for this, that we do have a special meeting to, uh, make sure they have time to go over it and, and be able to ask the questions they need to, um, and digest it properly.
So is, um, six o'clock then on Monday, the twenty-ninth? Is that good with everybody?
Well, isn't the twenty-ninth at six o'clock? Isn't there a retirement that we committed to? Am I?
Bricks, Bricks is on, is on the weekend.
Oh, Bricks is on, do we, do we have anything on the twenty-ninth on Monday? No, okay. That's fine, this is important, that's good.
Okay.
Monday, the twenty-ninth. At, um.
Well, wait, we've got, uh, the, n, no cat. Bobby, is you, that's tentative, well, it's a tentative meeting. Community meeting? Don't know anything about it. So maybe it's, I have, it's just a tentative meeting. But, yeah, we, well, we don't have a choice. But we, it's an, it's alternative, it's the, um, looking at all the roads in Northwest Orange County and county and city roads, and what, what we need to, what are our priorities? So, yeah, we can, we can just go ahead and do it at, um, about a good six o'clock then on that Monday, twenty-ninth?
That's good for me.
And that would be the only item on that agenda, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so Radley, soon if you get that advertised in for the twenty-ninth, six o'clock.
And then want to see if it's the pleasure of the council to move public hearing number five, resolution number twenty-five thirty-eight for the water fees up in the agenda? First, first item in public hearings or first one after presentations, whatever the pleasure is?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely need to move it up. There's residents here that want to speak about that, so I think that's important to move it up. Let's do it right after presentations.
Okay, I just have one more item, um, for business item number one. I've heard the recent public discourse on, uh, my recommended ratification of the permanent city administrative position. The last thing I want to be is a detriment or distraction to the city of Apopka or its operations. Rather, my goal is to do everything I can to be an asset to the city, bringing positive ideas and outcomes. So with that said, I understand if at this time the council would like to pull that item from the agenda. And regardless, I'll continue to bring the best, uh, of my abilities to the city on a daily basis, uh, in whatever capacity the city is asked of me. So up to y'all consideration.
Okay. Proclamations, okay, I've got the, obviously, it's the Hispanic Heritage Month, which we're excited about Saturday. I know that Marlin's got a really good lineup for this Saturday, so we are excited about that. But I do want to read the proclamation. And the, uh, the proclamation reads, "Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our culture and society and helped make America into the incredible country it is today. And whereas Hispanic American men and women embody the American values of devotion to faith and family, hard work and patriotism through their countless contributions as leaders, innovators, entrepreneurs, and members of the armed forces. And whereas our Hispanic community brings a rich cultural heritage representing many countries, ethnicities, and religious traditions that are interwoven in the fabric of America. And whereas our Hispanic community has a profound influence on our city and country by enhancing and shaping our national heritage with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And whereas this month, we honor Hispanic Americans for their countless contributions to our nation. Through their dedication to family, community, and our country, they helped to build a better future for all Americans. To honor the achievements of Hispanic Americans, the Congress by public law one hundred dash four oh two, as amended, has authorized annually a proclamation designated September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five as National Hispanic Heritage Month here in Apopka, and call upon all public officials, educators, librarians, and all Apopkas to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs." Mr. Blaskin, if you want to get a picture, but you want to, we'll say a few words and then we'll, or?
I just want to kind of just, uh, recognize our staff, our first responders, uh, you know, all the businesses that are here in the City of Apopka that have contributed. And, um, of course, we have the farm workers, whole community. I've been here twenty-one years. And, um, you know, we have a, a large, diverse, uh, Hispanic community that has been a great, uh, contributor to our economic growth here. And, uh, it's good that we get to recognize them. Okay, thank you.
And speaking of Hispanic Americans, Marlin, come on down. Lead us off, Apopka Youth Council.
Good evening, Mayor Nelson, Commissioners, city staff, and the wonderful residents of Apopka. My name is Marlon Diaz, and I serve as the special project coordinator for the City of Apopka. It is my honor tonight to introduce the members of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Apopka Youth Council. The Apopka Youth Council is designed to engage high school students in civic life, give them firsthand experience with local government, and empower them to be the leaders in their schools and communities. Through this initiative, we hope to expose our youth to how their city functions and inspire a lifelong commitment to service and community pride. This year, we had a strong pool of applicants, which I'm very proud to report. They're bright, motivated students from across Apopka. Each submitted letters of recommendation and resumes. And after review, we are proud to present thirteen new and six returning members who will represent the voices of Apopka's youth. Our new twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six members are, and we can hold the claps, some of them are not with us today, but Madison Boshin, Colin Plaken, You Can Wave Colin, Dylan Henry, Chloe Palmer, Isaiah Smith, Micah Hillman, Amy Armenteros, Braylon Brackett, Anthony Carrion, Zoe Orretta, Leilani Houston, Noah Pratt, Jayden Cubero, and last but not least, our wonderful returning members, August Rice, Andreas Mayer, Sophia Powell, Brock Shapiro, Kendall Walker, and Ava Mesa. Welcome, twenty-five, twenty-six Apopka Youth Council. See, we needed that tonight. This year's youth council represents a broad cross section of our schools. We have thirteen students from Apopka High School. We have three students from Forest Lake Academy. We have one student from Wykota High School, one student from Central Florida Preparatory, and one student from Orlando Science High School. Altogether, the council is composed of twelve seniors and seven juniors, which means the juniors are coming back next year. They already have that fair warning. We're ensuring a balance of seasoned student leaders and rising voices in our community. As the new term begins, the youth council has outlined several priorities for the year. Some of them include supporting city events and initiatives. Of course, that is essential, that is important to give back to our community. Producing the fourth volume of the Legends of Apopka booklet, which has been incredible every time, and we hope to make this fourth one an even better one. We're proud, very proud, to attend the Florida League of Cities Youth Summit this November in the land of Florida. You're all coming with me. So, and last but not least, serving as the voice of Apopka's youth to the city council and administration, which you were all here to witness public comment and listen to the exchange of ideas. So that's where we are. Through these efforts, our members will grow as leaders, give back to their. Through these efforts, our members will grow as leaders, give back to their beloved city, and strengthen the protect the connection between local governments and the next generation. On behalf of the city of Apopka, I want to thank you, Mayor, and our commissioners and staff for supporting this program. You all mean a lot. I've only been in this for a month, and I can tell you, my wheels are rolling, all engines, all gas, no stop. Um, and I'm not running on Cuban coffee. By the way, I'm Cuban-American, Cuban coffee, very important. It'll keep you going for days. It is my privilege, once again, to present to you the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Apopka Youth Council. Thank you all. Thank you to the residents, staff, commissioners, mayor. Have a wonderful council evening. And if my wonderful Apopka Youth Council could come up front for a picture with our commissioners and mayor, thank you all. Thank you very much.
So, all of them have great ideas on what they want to accomplish this year, but I think that, that, the, the one that stood out to me was that there's a couple of them that want to fix a pothole, so we're going to give them the opportunity to go fix a pothole sometime over the next year. So, we're, we're excited about what they're, what they're going to accomplish this year.
Yeah, if I can on that too, uh, just briefly, when I was in, um, high school a year or two ago, uh, I'd actually worked with, uh, former Commissioner Kathy Till to create, it was called at that time, uh, the Youth Advisory Board. So it was cool to be a part of that, and, and it was back in two thousand and five or six, uh, so it's just cool to see that that's still momentum being built. And it's cool to see that you can start somewhere and, and, and be to where I'm at now. So it's exciting to see, uh, new students kind of get some fire and engagement locally because our future is our students, so it's very cool to see.
All right, we've got five consent agenda items. Does anybody from the public or anybody from the diets need to pull any of those items? If not, for motion to approve all five items. I've got five.
Four.
It's, yeah, it's only four.
You have five of yours?
For consent, yeah.
Because you have the same one as he, he had.
Right.
We only have four.
We only have four.
Women, so me.
So which one are we?
You only have four?
Oh, let me look, picking.
There's only, there's only four. There's only, there's only.
Also, the finders software solution was removed?
That's coming back next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, it didn't make it out of the, the little script there. Apologies.
Okay. So anyway, we've got four items, uh, look for motion approved. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor. All opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're going to pick up, uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Susan, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, establishing twenty twenty-six rate schedules pertaining to city of Apopka water, water use charges and deposits, wastewater use charges and deposits, distributed wastewater treatments, system use charges and deposits, and reclaim water, water rates, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The city council establishes the rates for the water and wastewater reclaimed services by city ordinance two four seven five. After the passage at this current meeting, the proposed rates will be or already are in the adopted budget. Um, the proposed rates reflect a fifteen point five percent increase to support the adopted budget for FY twenty-five, twenty-six Utility Operating Fund. I have Sean Ocaseo here to answer any additional questions that you may have. I think we, um, during our briefings, we went into great details and providing additional information, and hopefully we addressed all of your questions at that time. However, if you have any more questions, Sean and I are here to, to address those questions.
Okay, any questions for Blanche, for, for Sean? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Thanks, Woodham. I don't understand how y'all can jump fifteen point one whatever percent in one year. My water bill lasts a month, went up forty-six dollars already. Yes, I got city sewage and trash. I don't know if it's been implemented yet or not. And I don't know why my water bill went up that high. We've had plenty of rain, my yard ain't been watered. But what bothers me is how many, can you answer me how many meters in Apopka are not working properly or not being read properly? No one can answer that question. How can you justify raising a water bill up fifteen percent? And they don't even know how many gallons they're using. You're just going to start charging them. Unless I'm missing something. But if you can't read the meter, does, does it make sense charging more money for it? I know y'all can hear me just staring, nervous. But I think that I, I disagree with the, the, uh, the raising the price right now until y'all can get, that, I mean, apparently no one knows how many meters aren't working. It's no wonder we're in a hole. Or over, we got too much money.
If I can, Mister Woodham, just, I just want, I didn't want to interrupt you there. La- I feel like last year was sixty-six hundred that we had that maybe weren't working, and I think we're closer to, well, actually, I don't know the number now.
Oh, yes, we, we're getting very close to under four thousand.
Under four thousand?
Yes, sir. We started out in October when the program started, we were at thirty-one percent, and we are trending down to about fifteen percent now.
So you're saying thirty-one percent of how many?
Of the total amount that we bill.
What's the total amount, plus or minus?
Let's say we have about thirty thousand customers. And those bills are estimated.
My name is Renee Bailey. I live in Arrow Estates. And I don't have to worry about my bills. I'm very lucky. If the water rates grow up, I can pay them. Am I happy? No. But I'm up here now for the people who have estimated water bills that I noticed on last meetings that can't pay the back estimates. And some of this is going to run a few thousand dollars for the people that can't afford ten dollars more. I'm speaking for the people that can't be here tonight or don't know to be here tonight to ask for help. I'm asking for your help. We've got wonderful people in here, uh, the city of Apopka that cannot meet their bills today. Every time I look around my bills, all of them are going up. Some people are going to be living on beans and rice and thankful that they have a can of beans. They can't afford the can of beans. Let's give them a bag of beans and a bag of rice. I can go out to eat. I don't have a problem, and yet a lot of these people can't pay their water bill. They can't afford to pay the other bills. They're charging things. Please, please, please. When you see this come through on the estimates, don't punish these people, please. They're desperate. I'm not. I'm speaking for them. Please. Thank you.
Hey, Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rooney Hills Lane. This is all about what goes around comes around, the failure of our budgeting process, the failure to fix the meters, four thousand meters, this is ludicrous. Failure to use our development fees to build the stations we need for all the new development you sit up here and approve every week. Failure to properly maintain and replace equipment as it needs to be replaced. Thirty percent, a year and a half ago, thirty percent of all our pump stations, pumps, equipment was past its normal lifespan. No excuse. No one be complaining for was one or two or three percent rate increase because that's what inflation is doing. Until you fix the blessed meters, you ought to use your reserves so not to increase for those people that need, that have the challenges that they do, use the reserves until you fix and do your act.
Albert McCamie, three six oh three, Golden Gem Road. It was interesting just now how many people used the word estimate. And they used it with a certain amount of venom in their voice, and I can appreciate why nobody wants to hear estimates. But Commissioners, all you deal with is estimates. Your budgets are estimates, not even really very good estimates. I could stand here just now and tell you why your budgets are incorrect. I can tell you just now that some of the money that you think you're going to take out of the funds for impact fees, you're not going to be able to do that. It's going to have to go out the general fund, but I'm not going to take up your time today. The solution that we need to find is how can we stem the increase just now in rates and mileage and all sorts of things? The answer is pretty simple, because at this particular moment in time, we own a forty percent share of Lake Apopka Natural Gas. We have to cook two commissioners here tonight who sit on the board of Lake Apopka Natural Gas. So they're well informed about Lake Apopka Natural Gas. Maybe someone could tell us how much dividend we get from the city every year from Lake Apopka Natural Gas. It's only several hundred thousand dollars. Yet Lake Apopka Natural Gas is currently valued somewhere in the region of fifty million dollars. If we own forty percent of fifty million dollars, that's between twenty and twenty-five million dollars that we could have in the bank that we could be earning probably six or seven percent interest. We could probably look to be taking in two billion dollars a year in revenue rather than the several hundred thousand dollars that we take from the dividends. But even if we, we, we decided to sell Lake Apopka Natural Gas, there's so much more that we could do with the revenue that comes in with that just now. It would benefit the infrastructure of the city. Not only would it benefit it for today, but if we get in front of the problems, we're going to remove this continual system of having to hike the rates every year. And let me tell you, I don't believe that we should be cutting back the rates. I don't believe we can afford to, because all we do is exacerbate the system going down the line a couple of years. Very soon, we're going to have to discuss Golden Gem Road. We can't afford to get rid of Golden Gem Road. We really can't. And I hope I can do quite a large presentation when that comes up. And I've said we should actually be doubling the size of Golden Gem Road. We should actually be boosting that up to, to maybe six hundred thousand gallons. It has numerous benefits, but the main benefit is you cannot use city funds just now from going forward to do anything to Golden Gem Road because it's negligence, it's a deterioration, and you can't pay that at impact fees.
I think it was about Leroy Bell, I think it was about two years, uh, maybe three years ago, we got up and we started talking about these meters. At that time, if you remember, it was a malfunction in the meters. And the meter was purchased by the city, and it wasn't no manufacturer warranty on these meters. And we was talking about purchasing new meters. But the problem here, all the meters, the four thousand meters is on the north side of Apopka that you projecting what the water bill is going to be. It's no bad reading on the south side of Apopka, an unincorporated south of Apopka. That's right, you know, telling the truth, smile for me, man. I like that. And when you raise the rate over here, you raising the rates over there. And the slap in the face is that you raising rates on the citizen of Apopka, then I read in the Apopka Voice, is where you offsetting something else to save them money because they got to pay more money on this end. We got over one point some billion dollars from the sales of the farm equipment when they took away the buck. Everybody got paid out there. The farmers got paid. The workers didn't get paid because they wasn't paying FICA, they wasn't paying FICA, so the government wouldn't come in and do anything for the farm workers. One point five million dollars is somewhere here in Apopka. This man know where it's at. This money could use, the money was supposed to be used to re-educate the farm workers. If you're not going to re-educate the farm workers, why don't you take that money and do something for all the citizens in Apopka? But we can't, we can't get there. We won't get there. The civil reason that we won't get there because we got too many enablers protecting this guy. This is the reason that we needed the forensic audit. I know that, I, I know it's funny to you, but it, what goes around comes around, and it's coming pretty soon.
Sylvester Hall, in every situation, there's a, there's a cause and there's an effect. And for over three years, we've been dealing with the, the effects of these water meters. We haven't really got down to the cause of it. And when I sit up here and I evaluate over the last four years and eight months of coming to these city council meetings, it's, it's clear to me, Mister Olson come up here, he talk about it all the time, but if you go back and roll the tape, it's been brought up by myself and others many a times. When we say we got a strong mayor, who is holding the departments accountable for these meters, for the work get done on time, making sure that the department head got their personnel that need to do the job, so when they come in, they can be proactive instead of reactive? If none of the commissioners can, can talk to the department heads or talk to the employment, it, it falls on the mayor. And so where's the leadership? We heard when we had the last city administrator here, that, uh, the mayor didn't talk to him two or three weeks. So if he ain't talking to the city administrator in two or three weeks. So if he ain't talking to the city administrator in two or three weeks, what is he doing with the department head? And so I can't blame the department head because I'm not there to see what is his staffing. Do he have the proper staff to carry out the responsibility that he, that he's required to do for the city? And so when you do these, do these type of things, and we come up here and just do this dog and pony show and be called the Peanut Gallery and all that, and soon as we get done, the mayor moves on to the next agenda. Don't take nothing down. Don't ask, hey, put this aside, let's look into this. If it works, let's, let's incorporate it, let's make it happen. Never does that. Mr. Abbott, regardless of how you like his presentation, he, he brings a lot of good stuff. But we never sit down and even analyzing to see if it's something that's going to help the city. So now the resources, resources of your city, you telling the city you don't even need that. And I, I'm very proud of, uh, of Ratley for one thing, for pulling his name out to being the city administrator because the last time the mayor, strong mayor appointed somebody to appointment, we end up having a fatal casualty in the fire department. So I call these things I, uh, LEP, loyalty employment positions. And that happens a lot, and it causes disgruntled work environment because I've been there and done that. So when we talk about DEI, those people during earned it because that was a position to let them in the door to make sure that, hey, look, and show they can do the job. And so when we have these loyalty positions, it comes back and hurt the city as a whole because we don't know who is really qualified to do the job. So we need to do a better job than looking into that. And we may need the commissioners to be able to oversee that also, to be able to ask the employees what's going on.
Rogers Beckett, um, I just have a pretty, pretty quick question. Um, I know there's been a lot of talk about the estimated bills that goes out. And the reason I'm asking this question, I was having a conversation with one of my tenants the other day. And they had their water bill go from twenty dollars to thirty-six dollars up to eighty-two dollars. At the eighty-two dollar mark, it was estimated bill. So my question is, if it's going to estimate it, is it estimated upon the usage you have in the house? Or is it some other type of consumption number that is being factored into that? Thanks.
Any, anybody else? Now, Lance, you can answer that one, the estimated.
Um, the estimated bills are based on the previous months on, uh, twelve months ago. So it's only twelve month cycle. So whatever that consumption was twelve months ago, that's what it's being estimated on.
That, a resident just asked, uh, if that previous year was also an estimate.
Yeah, it, it takes on that same estimate until it gets fixed.
So anybody else from the public wants to speak, speak on this?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Looking for.
Well, I have, I have a couple of questions there, and it's some we, we've discussed. And, and so the, the last meeting we had last week, last Tuesday, I think it was, workshop on these numbers, I had questions about the indirect cost. They had stayed the same. And the indirect costs were six point two million dollars and change that were transferring from the water fund, which these rates build, uh, go to, and it was being transferred to the general fund. So my question was, what is those, what are those indirect costs? What's built into that? You gave me examples of the, the, um, that fund uses IT, it uses HR, so a little bit of each department gets charged back for what they're using. So that makes sense. What I was curious to see is, what are those exact numbers? How are we getting to that six point two million dollar number? That's been consistent over the last three or four or five years, whereas everything else has been all over the place and really increasing. So at our meeting yesterday, you had provided, um, a breakdown of how we got to those numbers. And I guess my, my concerns with those numbers though are that it's charging a lot to different areas that I'm, I don't know if we just threw those numbers together. It's about a little over a million dollars went to just legal services alone. And is that fund truly using over a million dollars worth of legal fees? So I didn't know if we just kind of threw some numbers together and that. So, and I say all that to say, there's other questions in those kind of numbers that were broken down that I know are not supplied here, um, and maybe we can put those up for residents to see. Just again, how that general transfer fund, which all of our enterprise funds due to the general fund, my concern is that it's somewhat of a subsidy to the general fund. So increasing the, the fees on these enterprise funds, this water rate fund helps to offset the general fund, which allows us to reduce the mileage rate, even though it's an eight point one percent increase over the rollback rate. So that's my concern is that these transfers aren't built on real numbers. It's just kind of numbers that we threw together. So that's a real concern for me there. An idea was brought to me for, we do MSBUs for lighting districts, for new neighborhoods that come online, so that doesn't cost us an extra, or the current residents that are here, extra funds or fines or fees. Are we able to do any type of MSBU or something crafted similarly to new communities and new developments that are coming into the city?
For what purpose?
Excuse me? For, for water, for any water rates, any water, um, additions, maintenance? Yeah, so I mean, it would function, I don't know, I mean, it was, it was a kind of a, a thirty thousand foot view of, hey, maybe this is an additional rate to, or additional way to help residents that are already here and, and charge those that are maybe using a little bit more water or that are draining the system.
Sa- sadly, no.
Okay. So again, just a question on that. Uh, do we have, and we're talking a lot about estimated bills. So under this fund, are we, under any type of income line item, are we, uh, budgeting for kind of a recapture rate of those estimated bills? So, you know, I, I think two years ago, somebody had reached out to me and I think their bill was twenty-seven hundred dollars that they had once their estimated bill was done. Obviously, that's a shock to anybody's system. And I know that we worked with them in some capacity to average that out over twelve months, eighteen months, whatever that looks like. Do we see that as an income? Do, are we budgeting for those recaptures every year, or is that?
It's, it's factored in because it's, it's included in the trend. I mean, as soon as, as, when that number continue to go down, then, okay, it would no longer be a factor. But right now, we're doing the estimated readings and we're doing the adjustments, we're doing the payment plan. So it's kind of factored in the trends of the revenue and we use that as a projection going forward.
So, but it's not listed like a specific, like a recapture of, uh, those? Okay.
It's included in the totals.
Okay. All right. All right. Those are the questions I have.
Thank you.
Well, I know that, that the next meeting, Ratley, why don't you just kind of go over some of the things that we're talking about? You know, the, some of the, the, um, the programs that we're working on that will help us either.
Going forward.
Yeah, going forward. And, and, you know, we, we all talked about looking in January after we've gone through one quarter, is to, is look back and see of all the improvements we've made on revenue enhancements and, and, you know, uh, cutting expenses where we can, where we can get some additional savings.
Yeah, so the, I mean, the biggest push right now is, uh, that's been given to utility billing and, uh, utility operations is th- those meters. Uh, so pushing to continue to drive those numbers down to more of a, a national standard, which is around that five to ten percent. The goal is to get to a point where, uh, we're getting the alerts that a meter is having an issue during a cycle period, that we have the ability to get staff out to that meter to get it addressed before that next bill. Obviously, sometimes that can and can't happen. Um, to ensure that we are staying well stocked on the meter supplies. We did get with our suppliers and make sure we had a good understanding of their lead times so that we are ordering appropriately to make sure we are not running out of stock at any point throughout the year. Additionally, in the budget, uh, for FY twenty-six, we do have, as I mentioned, those new FlexNet base stations, which will help improve the coverage, uh, area throughout the city, uh, something we're a little deficient in that should help the reliability of those reads. We are, uh, working on, uh, and we'll come back to propose some new installation fee adjustments. Those are for the new, new growth, the new building. Um, we've looked at those fees, uh, initially, and we are a little low on not impact fees, but these are tap service fees, sewer fee, sewer tap fees, um, to kind of get us more in line with what it actually costs us to, to do those, uh, those services. We'll be bringing back utility tampering, uh, fine, uh, we are noticing while we're out in the field. The, the meter not working or the meter not reading could be as simple as, uh, the wire on the, uh, FlexNet, uh, transponder, uh, being nicked or cut or unplugged. Those are obviously easier fixes than replacing a whole meter, but, um, we are noticing some of that going on, uh, throughout the city. Then again, just looking for whatever operational efficiencies, whether it be through the operation itself, the staffing, the supplies that we're utilizing, and then also the capital improvement plan that we've got in place. So again, assessing vehicles, equipment, really taking a look at those life cycles to make sure we're hitting the mark where we need to. Sometimes if you wait too long to replace, you're incurring additional maintenance costs. If you replace too soon, you're obviously incurring a, a higher replacement cost, um, and not getting the full life out of the equipment. And then a small credit card processing fee to help ease that.
I guess one other one, you know, you know, we're, we're making sure we collect for the contractors that are out there that are cutting our lines.
Yeah, moving meters and all of that.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we want to make sure that as they go out and put either, you know, cable or whatever they're putting down, that if they break our line, they have to not only pay for, well, we send our, our team out to fix it, they've got to pay for the, you know, the labor costs, the, the, the equipment costs, but also if it, you know, depend on how much water, they need to pay for the water loss. So there's, you know, we've, but it's not a, it's not a number of Sean, you know, Sean has to go on what we've done, not what we're, we're contemplating. And so we've got to look at, so until we get through a first quarter where we can say, okay, we've, we've had, you know, twenty breaks caused by contractors and we recovered, you know, twenty thousand dollars, then we, we can start to get a, you know, a sense of where that, that's going to take us. And along with the estimated meters and, and all the things that we're talking about. And, and I will give, you know, you know, the utility billing team, uh, finance as well as our public services. We've been meeting for, for months now trying to, you know, get, you know, both sides on the same page. Been, been a challenge at times, but we're, I think we're there. We got, you know, everybody's rolling in the right direction.
Yes, sir.
And I think we're going to see results that, that hopefully in, in January, we can come back and give you a, a really good progress report.
Every day, every day we see results.
And, and to echo that, Mayor, um, uh, definitely appreciate, appreciate the staff on Lynch's team and staff on Glenn's team. I set some pretty lofty goals on the meter replace, meter repair program and, and they've been at it nonstop, uh, trying to knock those numbers down. So they've been putting in the work and it's, it is showing. Um, obviously, it still takes time to, to get down to that level, but staff have been moving, moving well.
Thank you, thank you both.
Now, in, in, I, I forgot, last meeting, we, you had brought up or presented a list of about one point two million dollars in reductions that we can implement, but for some reason, we're not going to implement right now. Do we look deeper into that of, of moving forward with those so that it's not an unnecessary increase that we're cutting and, and sharpening our pencil where we need to?
Yeah, so those are, uh, most of those on that list were the vehicles. Um, and we are going, I mean, we're still need to assess where we're at with those. But those were the items that if we can, if we can, again, we need to make sure, we're talking about a four-year plan here. So we need to make sure that we're confident that that vehicle is going to be in a good position over the four-year period and not need to be replaced.
Well, it was, wasn't there about nine hundred thousand for a specific project that?
There was, uh, yeah, we're looking to reduce, uh, nine hundred thousand out of the list station seventeen, and that was contingency related.
Right. Have we looked into that more? If that's doable, if that's something that we don't feel we need a thirty percent contingency, we only need a ten percent contingency?
Our, our city engineer is pretty solid on getting that back to ten percent, uh, more in line with what we do on.
So then we can move forward with that reduction then and not have that in the budget?
I think it's something like you just said, it's something we'll look at going forward after this first quarter. And once we get more information on it. But, um, nothing at this time that we're looking at cutting out of the twenty-six budget right now.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I think those would be very important. Those are low hanging fruit for us to save some residents money, so.
And, and those would be positives as we, as we move into the next year. Because again, as the mayor had mentioned, the, the, the plan moving forward is to continue this first quarter of the twenty-six budget, uh, with these items and then get back with our consultant to have them look at the trends. Some of those items that we say, all right, yes, this is definitely over the next four-year period, we can remove these off of that plan. All that's going to help in increments, um, and then come back and, and kind of give an update to council.
When can we expect that update then? I knew you said at the end of Q one.
So we're looking at probably like mid-January, February.
Probably won't have the numbers good then, but I would say probably around February.
Yeah. So February, February, March, we could get back to you.
Get back.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, with that, looking for a motion to to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith? Second. Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, no. And it's just for those reasons. I'm just not comfortable with, I think we can sharpen our pencil a little bit more and, and get it down for the residents every dollar count.
And I, and I would like to also, I'm sorry, he wasn't finished. Okay. And I also want to say the reason why I actually had a change of heart was because, um, listening to the professionals and understanding that is essential for the health of the city and for long-term, for the benefit of essential services. There was really no way to trim that budget down that would not have cost, um, a major issues when it come to public safety and also the health of the city moving forward with bonding powers and things like that. So looking at it from that standpoint and understanding that it was essential, it was something that had to happen. Um, and I do understand that impact and the increase that, you know, every dollar counts, um. And I definitely recommend that anyone who has an issue with the increase, there are a lot of different nonprofit, um, agencies that can assist, um, with, uh, if you need help paying your water bill, light bill and things like that. But understand, this decision was extremely hard and difficult for me to make, but understanding that it would have been irresponsible and reckless of me to not agree with the increase because it's essential. And without that, the, the city would have been in some trouble. So that is why I had made the decision to actually really, really, um, changed my position with it. And, um, thanks, um, to the, um, company that really, really, on Monday, really, really went in detail with me over understanding, counting what that looks like. So that is why I changed my position.
Thank you.
And I give you, and I want to say that, I just want to say that, you know, we, we give you our commitment. I mean, the, the team, uh, the finance team and public service team that we, we are, you, you know, what, what could do is, uh, Ratley, what do we do this, uh, every month until we, we come back? Is we get a, um, give them a progress report on the, on the meters?
No, no problem. We're working on that. Yeah.
Yeah, that, so just the first meeting of every month going through till January. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate all your help. Okay, back to item number two, nonprofit grant program. Ratley?
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, Ratley Williams, Center of City Administrator. The item for you this evening is the Nonprofit Grant Program Selection Committee Recommended Awards for the FY twenty-five Grant Application Window. This FY twenty-five grant window, it was the first, uh, run of this program, opened up August first, twenty twenty-five, and ran through August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, at four P M. when it closed. During that time, um, we did receive several applications. Those applications were from Drums and Recovery, Inc., Loving Assistance, Loving Assisting, Nurturing, Educating, and Supporting Teenage Girls, Inc., Central Florida Council, Scouting America, Love Our Youth, Inc., Florida Impact, Reimagine Communities, and Mentor Florida. The selection committee met for the first time last Wednesday, uh, here at City Hall. It was a, it was a great meeting. The committee did, um, nominate Ms. Lorena Potter as their chair, to help run the meetings as we move forward. Out of that meeting came, uh, review of the applications, uh, scoring and recommended awards, uh, from the committee. So up on the screen, I did, uh, put the organization, the request, uh, provided, or request, uh, from the application, the match that we did confirm, uh, and the match that we did confirm, uh, and then the award recommendation from the, from the committee. Uh, all the applications were provided in the documents with the staff report, uh, for y'all to see, uh, the individual applications. Out of that meeting, uh, six of the seven were recommended by the committee for award. Uh, the seventh Mentor Florida was not recommended. For a couple of reasons, uh, one was the, uh, overall content of the application was a little lacking, uh, in, in materials and uh, the recommendation from the committee was to, um, reach back out to that group and encourage them to look at the program again in the future and, and, um, pay a little more attention to the application process. Also at that meeting, the committee, uh, had some discussion and have some additional recommendations, uh, to the program to help improve the application and review process. Three of them provided their, uh, first to require applicants to provide a five-minute presentation after application of their application or program at the scoring meeting. Then also the opportunity to provide a five-minute program recap presentation to the committee at the completion, uh, of the grant period. Also to update the application online to provide a, a specific standalone section to where they could clearly identify the percent, percentage of the grant match and the type of match provided. That's something we did have to clarify was with the, most of the applicants at, um, because they weren't as clear as we had hoped in the narrative as to what that match was. And then, uh, also clarify the eligibility, the discussion was to, uh, and this was a discussion when the program was started, for federally tax exempt and nonprofit organizations. So we had a little bit of a language, uh, adjustment needs to be done on that application to make sure it clearly indicates what the program is for. So those are the recommendations. I know Miss Lorena is here, uh, tonight. And I know Mr. Hall is here as well, who's also on the committee. I don't see anybody else. So again, the recommended motion is approval of the, uh, six nonprofit grant applicants, Drums and Recovery, Inc., Loving Assisting, Nurturing, Educating, Supporting Teenage Girls, Inc., Central Florida Council, Scouting America, Love Our Youth, Inc., Florida Impact, and Reimagine Communities. So available for questions.
So any questions for Bradley or Lorena?
Yes, so, um, I did attend the entire, uh, process, the selection, um, and I did hear some of the recommendations and I kind of took some notes. And today I actually got to speak to, um, kind of discuss a little bit about, you know, what my feedback was on that, uh, um, the committee. First, I feel that the committee should have had a kind of a workshop so that they can kind of have gone over the guideline of this election process and they would have, uh, been able to have contributed their ideas at that time. So when they kind of sat as a, as a committee, I think there was a lot of discussion. There was some questions and inquiries. I mean, they did a good job with what they had, um, but I would, you know, and I, and I believe that, uh, our chairperson, uh, Lorena, and I spoke to Marilyn, uh, Maribel Brinkley, and they both agreed that maybe what the committee needs is, is a workshop, kind of incorporate your ideas into it. The selection process that you did the first time around, we, you know, I, you pretty much have to kind of go with it because they only submitted the applications with what was required from the original, uh, application. But before we send out a new application, if we can incorporate the ideas that the committee had and kind of just iron out some of the other issues, um, that have been brought up. Um, I did get an email. I don't know if we all got, did you get the email from, uh, Dr. O? Did you all got that? Um, and there were some concerns about the, uh, the program services expenses. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so as, um, Commissioner Velazquez was mentioning, we did the best that we could as a committee with the tools that we were given. We judged the applicants on the rubric that we were given. Um, we did make suggestions for improvement. Um, we were kind of surprised none of the applicants actually came to the public meeting. Um, so that would be something nice in the future or for us to have the, um, ability to ask them questions. To Dr. O's concern, I did pull the check of charity on all of the applicants. Of the seven that were, um, that applied, one we declined because they just, I shouldn't say declined, but, um, we suggest that they resubmitted a future date because they did not provide everything that was asked in the application. So there was not really a good way to judge them because we did not have their information. Of the other six, two, their program services expenses were one hundred percent on the check of charity. One was ninety percent, one was eighty-six, one was sixty-nine and one was sixty-eight. And while we would like to see that a little bit higher, we really want this program to be successful and we want people to apply, so we don't want to discourage, and that was not addressed in the application. There was nothing in the application that required you to be at a certain percent of program services. Um, the other thing that Dr. O, um, because I had a discussion with her as well, mentioned is on some of these, they did not file with the IRS. Um, most of these were current. They filed in twenty twenty-four and they're not due yet. But there's a couple that the last filing with the IRS was twenty twenty-three. So we're going on information that's from twenty twenty-three. So that may be something we need to look into addressing down the road. But we made the best recommendation, we felt with the information that we had. We do have suggestions that we talked to Bradley about, before the next, uh, applications are to be submitted. And, um, hopefully we can tweak the program and make it really successful for the community.
So the question is, like you said, the, the financials that they submitted from that, that the last was twenty twenty-three?
Well, I, they submitted a financial statement to us, but if you pulled the check of charity, I'll show you one.
Well, I have to. Where we, where, what did the committee recommend?
We still recommended because this was.
Sorry to interrupt. Can we just make sure it's on the mics? Just so everyone that. Thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt.
So this was not part of the, um, requirements. This is something that I just pulled on my own to bring to the committee. Um, so moving forward, all that was asked for on the rubric was, um, the grant application, I find, a financial disclosure statement, proof of their nonprofit status, proof of current liability sure, uh, insurance, the board of directors and advisory board list and letters of support. And then they have their years of service, their grant match and benefit to the city of Apopka. So that was not specifically addressed. So that's something moving forward, we may want to, um, incorporate that somehow into the process.
Yeah, Sylvester Hall, um, one of the committee members, uh, for the first time us getting together, uh, I think was, it was a excellent experience. Uh, there was chemistry and, uh, the, the only thing I would like to see better is us promoting the program because we have a lot of nonprofits out there, what we call boots on the ground. And some of them are intimidated when it comes to applying for grants. So we got to do a better job of reaching out to them, letting them know that we're here and getting them to come. But for the first time, I even complimented, uh, it was a great, uh, first time show. And there's the things that we need to incorporate. I'm sure that'll be done, but the score sheet that we had, I'm really, uh, okay with it, happy with it. It can be tweaked here and there, but it sets the foundation for us to judge. When we have too many applicants, then we can start isolating who we're going to award and who we're not. This time we was able to do just about everybody. And that's what we want to do. We don't want to turn anybody down. Because when you're out here, the biggest thing I was concerned about was the match, uh, uh, the, uh, the match. And when, uh, when somebody's applying for a grant, they see they got to do a match where they, they don't understand, hey, if it's five thousand, if I got to do a fifty percent or a hundred percent match, they're kind of skeptical. And so they don't even apply. So I just want to see us make this, uh, everything simplified, which, uh, I think we're, we're, we're headed in that direction and don't over, don't overcomplicate it. Don't overcomplicate it. But I think, uh, a great job by all. We had the binder. We had everything printed out for us. And so we can sit there and we can look at the information. And so moving forward, I'd just like to get it out so we'll have more than seven, uh, applicants that's, that's applying for the program. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on this one?
There are a couple of things that need to be clarified. Um, one is I thought they did a great job and I complimented them on the letter. It's a hard job starting something for the first time. One thing is that when it said a hundred percent on two of those, it wasn't a hundred percent services. It said they had a hundred percent revenue. It said it right on there, a hundred percent revenue. That had nothing to do with services. That was filled out improperly. We have no idea what they spent on services. Um, I attached and it may not have come through because, um, Commissioner Velazquez couldn't open it. Is their nine nineties said on two, one of them that they had earned like, that they had brought in like four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And I hope that wasn't the target of who we were trying to bring in, but they were making hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so you have someone ma, bringing in four hundred and forty, almost five hundred thousand dollars and they were spending two hundred and seventy-four thousand on employees. So if you're spending that much on employees and very little on services, like I said at the beginning, those that were spend, that were spending only sixty-nine percent was going to, um, services, that's a red flag on any charity. And that's why we have Charity Navigator. And when you're making recommendations, you want to hit on their rubric ninety percent. Now, what I recommended to, um, uh, Dr. Forlaw was that if y'all could get another meeting noticed and then if the, the commission was going to meet, the council was going to meet again and vote on it again, and y'all happened to just ironically have another meeting coming up this month before October one. So they could meet again, go back over this and filter out these ones that are wealthy and wasting sixty percent of their money, according to the nine nineties, on heavy, top-heavy employees and not on services. And I gave you instructions on how you can go about finding these holes here. And I offered in the past to help y'all with the vetting process. This isn't a rubric problem. This isn't telling them the rubric problem. This is the vetting process on the companies. And making sure they're legitimate, that they have all their ducks in a row prior to the rubric. Yeah, and so I'm not condemning what y'all did. I think y'all did a wonderful job. It's just the vetting process that I've talked about over and over and over again is the issue. And, um, I did that vetting today and I feel that it needs to be talked about again based on two of them being a sixty-nine and throwing away seven thousand dollars that we're giving out on two people, two, two groups. That's throwing away seven thousand dollars.
I'll be making a three six oh three Golden Gem Road. Dr. O mentioned something I think is particularly important. She spoke about the Department of Agriculture. Some of you know I run a, a nonprofit, have done for the last ten years. When I first set up the nonprofit, I had to do quite a lot of research. And one thing that surprised me is I actually required to apply to the Department of Agriculture for a license or an exemption to a license. If you run a nonprofit and you solicit for donations, you either have to have an exemption or you have to pay for the license. Then the license you have to pay for is dependent on how much money you've earned in previous years. I don't know if that's still the case. But again, if you're applying for grants, there's so many different organizations want you to be endorsed by a particular agency. So as a, as a person who's looking to, to get a donation, you might have to, to make representation to half a dozen different other agencies who see if, if you're a bona fide, uh, charity. But here's the fact, if it's still the case as it was, that the Department of Agriculture either issued exemption or a license, all you have to do when you look to see whether a five oh one C three is in good standing is look to see if they're registered currently with the Department of Agriculture. Why is that more important than looking at the five oh one C three? Because a five oh one C three doesn't lose its tax status for three years if they don't put in paperwork every year. So you could have a five oh one C three charity who's not doing particularly well, who asks you for donations and you go out and you give them donations and then you find out they haven't put in paperwork for the last year, the last three years, they're about to be disqualified. But if they don't have the agricultural license, then believe it or not, Department of Agriculture can levy thousands of dollars of fines on an entity which solicits donations without an exemption or without a license.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and just want to thank, thank the committee. Appreciate all your hard work. I, I know that, uh, put a lot of effort in it, make sure you, you know, I think you, you made sure you got the right, the right folks and funding for the right reason. So we appreciate your, your efforts there. And so with that, um, look for motion to approve the nonprofit grant program selection for the FY twenty-five grant application window. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries now.
Mr. Williams, can we, I guess, bring this back up to how we can navigate moving forward?
Uh, if, if the council would like, I can get with Ms. Potter and we can have another committee meeting to let them kind of talk about some other ideas. Adjustments if you'd like.
I just want to make sure that we don't make it too complicated because we only had seven applicants. So you don't want to make it too, I mean, we're not giving away millions of dollars here.
So these, these would be recommendations that would have to come back to the council for approval. Regardless, so it's, again, if that's what you'd like, I can coordinate with the committee members and we can try and get a meeting put together for that.
Yeah, I think to have them just provide a recommendation and we can, uh, review it from there and see what makes sense and not. And, um, because again, they're the ones kind of taking deeper dives. So I think that'd be valuable.
Correct. And just a clarification, is everybody comfortable with the three recommendations they made out of this cycle? I could bring it back up on the screen.
The, the three recommendations.
For, for improving the, the program itself.
These were the three recommendations I came up with during the meeting.
You want a motion on that?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Everybody.
Can you repeat that again?
The, on the screen, the committee during the meeting had these three recommendations to implement into the program. Require the applicants to provide a five-minute presentation at the scoring meeting, highlighting their application and program. And then the opportunity, if they wish, to provide like a recap at a future scoring meeting.
So I don't think this happens, should we have to be in person? Can they send it via email or like a video or Skyping in? Because have them come in person for, I just think, once again, we don't want to complicate this.
You could, I mean, you could do a couple of things. You could make it not mandatory, but give points if you'd like.
Because we don't want people, you know, then we're not going to be there. We have to be careful with that because we're going to allow, tell them to come in and then the committee asks them questions and it's not directly. and it's not directly representing the, the city, cuz we're not the ones asking the questions. So to them, I know that was one of the recommendations, that they're able to ask them questions. But I just think that we shouldn't have a free-for-all with the committee asking these applicants questions.
It's at the pleasure of, of the council on that. Um, it is, when, just kinda giving example back on the TDT grant, uh, process, that was part of the process, um, for that funding. Now that was a much larger funding request. So, um, but again, that's, these are just the three recommendations that came out of committee for consideration.
Well, that's, uh, if the committee recommended that, um, I don't wanna say no to their recommendations. I would suggest that they meet as a committee and they discuss what, um, tweaks that you wanna do in this application process. And then they would bring that back to the council. Rather than saying, we don't require, cuz that was important. I mean, when the committee met, the only person that was there for the public was myself and the Apopka chief. And I thought, and I remember making an announcement at the previous council meeting, cuz I thought this is the first time we're rolling this out, that, um, some of the local ones would have shown up just out of curiosity to see the process. So, um, I'm, I'm, if, if we have to say vote the three that they wanted, can we just wait until the committee meets again and they consider any additional, um, information that they want to put in there, then bring it back as a whole to us?
You, you could do that. The only, the only, um, issue with that is the program was set to start a new cycle October first with the new budget.
In addition to that, we, it should be a list of questions, cuz it just can't be a free-for-all. I just, I'm just completely against a free-for-all when you, you know, for five thousand dollars. So.
No, I, you know, the committee, when they met.
But we don't.
The, the questions they were asking each other and.
But they're, they're looking to ask the applicants questions. So that's.
Well, there were some things that they were unsure of, but they were.
One of the issues that came up was the match component, because on the application, there was no question about the match. So when we went to grade, there was only one of the applicants who actually had written in their narrative what their match was. If the applicants would have been here, we all assumed that they had a match. We read their financials that they gave to us, but we can't assume, okay, they're gonna do a fifty percent match or they're gonna do a hundred percent match. If they, if the applicants had been here, we could've said, can you come up and tell us what your match is? But they weren't here. Um, it's not that we wanna grill them, but it's just if there's a question. And the only other way I know to address that without having them be physically present would be if we get the applications far enough in advance that if we have questions, we could maybe send it back to staff to reach out. But I do think if, my personal opinion, if you're asking people for money, you need to have some skin in the game. And it doesn't hurt to show face. And I know a lot of the charities in Apopka don't have any problem in coming and coming to council and asking for money, which is my understanding, that's part of the reason that we're doing this program, to kinda have a vetting process for that. If they're able to come to a council meeting and ask for money, there's no reason they shouldn't be able to show up to the committee meeting. That's just my personal opinion. But we'll entertain whatever the council approves. But that's part of the reason that we had to ask about that.
The only thing I'm recommending is that the committee meet as a committee, have a workshop, and they work out what's, what they feel can tweak and make the application. Of course, not burdensome to the one, to the applicant, but that there's some satisfaction by the committee members that there's enough information to grant the, uh, the award.
And then also updating the application so it can actually, you know, be clear. Application. I think that's two.
Okay. And I think the, the three recommendations, I think the three recommendations we had before came from the committee. So they've already met. So I don't see why we just, we can't go ahead and vote for these. So these are included in the next round of applications.
And then refund it again, maybe thereafter.
Right, yes.
Can you, I'm, just so everyone can hear.
Since the next window is October, if these are approved, then the next time, we may find some other tweaks that need to be done and then we can recommend those for the spring session.
So we're only meeting once again, the application in the fall, just once in the fall and then once in, okay.
Yeah. I just recommend the ones that we took our time, vetted. We know we need improvements, but we would like to see those, we would like to see that honor. That's what you asked us to do and we did it. We brought it back to you. So moving forward, we would like to see those six that we had nominated. We'd like to see them approved and we move forward.
I think we approved six already. So I, I move that we accept the three recommendations coming from the grant committee.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I'm gonna state the reason why. I think it's the liability that they, I just think we should have a screenable questioning that we actually asking them. There should be a detailed list of questions. And as an applicant, if I don't present well, or if they don't like the way I'm presenting, I, I just think it's just, it's just not fair to, to have a, to have a free-for-all for five thousand dollars. So that just might be.
We didn't necessarily have a public comment for that specific vote. For that motion, no.
Anybody wanna speak on that?
I just wanna make sure the opportunity is given.
All right. Thank you. All right. So a motion carries four to one with Commissioner Anderson in opposition. Okay. Next up, um, ITB two thousand twenty-five dash A dash two-two-five.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Um, the request before you is to award ITB twenty-five, twenty twenty-five A dash two-two-five landscaping and mowing services of right-of-way parks and facilities and municipal service benefit units to David Tree Expert Company as the primary contractor and Premier Lawn Maintenance as the alternate. Staff advertise the ITB for qualified contractors to furnish all the labor, supervision, materials, supplies, and equipment for landscaping and mowing services for the city. This award is being, is based on all-inclusive for all services in whole. So that's the request before you.
Any questions for Blanche? And I guess we got our Parks and Rec team with, have part of its, them, part of its street. So it's kind of a, so Bradley and Blanche and.
Everybody.
Michael Ortiz and Chris, whoever else is part of this, this bid. But try to put them all together. We think we got a better buying power. So that's the reason it was put together as one big, one big bid.
Correct. With the alternate.
Any questions for Blanche?
Yes. Can we discuss the, the bid protest? I, I know that email came over, uh, four forty-six today. Can you walk us through that? Or is there any legal issues there? Do we have concerns? What's the process? Uh, things of that nature. Just please kinda update us on that.
So yeah, uh, we did receive a bid protest from Brightview Landscaping Services in regard, in regard to this, um, uh, bid for services. I did share that with you again. Apologies, late kinda, uh, to the meeting, getting that to you. But, um, what happens in that scenario is, uh, they have to submit that formally in writing. That goes to the procurement, uh, finance team. Then finance, our finance department, procurement team, they review the protest and then they prepare a recommendation that comes to the city administrator's office. And that was the documents that provided to you, uh, in that email. That process happened. I then reviewed, uh, the protest and then also the recommendation. And I agreed with the recommendation provided by finance and denied the protest. From there, we are able to move forward, uh, with recommending awarding of this bid contract.
Okay. So there's no legal implication that's gone through a, a vetting process of sorts?
Yeah. And, and just kinda to color some details about the protest, there was some contention about, um, the fact that, uh, the bid broke up the services into some different categories and that perhaps we were gonna award that by category. In our bid language, it does give us as a city the right to decide how we award that bid. We can do it in part or in whole. Um, and that's part of the assessment when those prices come in. We looked at it and it's in the best interest of the city to go.
In whole.
In whole.
Okay. Attorney Shepherd, you echo the same sentiments that no, no issues on that front?
Uh, you, you're never gonna hear a lawyer say no issues, but what I'll tell you is that the, uh, uh, denial of the protest seems appropriate when I look at the front-end documents, which are the bid documents and their provisions and what the protest was based on. But when I say, uh, I can't go beyond that, it's because I can't tell when someone's ever going to sue, but I don't see a basis for a suit.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Blanche or Bradley? Okay. Anybody from the public who should speak on this one?
Uh, we didn't get a, I mean, I'm not sure, are they replacing all our mowing crews, this contract?
Uh, so this is a contract services. It's not gonna replace all of our in-house team. We're still, we'll still have the in-house, uh, maintenance personnel.
We're taking so much land from the county and all you gotta call contractors in the mow with it, right? Our in-house people can't handle it so much.
No, we've had a, we've, we've, uh, covered this mowing through other contracts in the past. And then we currently have a contract that's expiring and then a piggybacked contract. So this is just taking over that, those services.
That's what I was wondering.
So best of all, these contracts, do we have a, a Q eighteen? Because a lot of times when you come in, when I come in off of four twenty-nine, coming in that back way, I don't know the road, but it's always overgrown and it be that way for weeks. And so when you travel around the city of Apopka, it's good to have these contracts. But do we have anybody that's following up, making sure things are getting done, they're getting done on a timely basis? Because when you ride around the city, there's a lot of right-of-ways that don't represent the city well. And so I'm glad to see that we have a contract for this, but we need to make sure when we riding around the city that we make sure that they're carrying out what they get paid to do. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Well, I'll tell you one of the things that I, I can't remember how many more, um, I wish Michael were here. How many more? Vlad, you know how many more mows we do a year than is the, the DOT contract? Their, their requirement, I, not, not a big deal, but I know we, um, anyway, the DOT has a set number that they'll pay for and anything above that is on the city's, you know, dime.
And I think the proposal for next year is sixty-five thousand dollars.
For additional. Anyway.
I, I think it's overall.
Anyway, what I'm saying is, just one thing is that we're, we're making more passes every, you know, every year than the DOT contract provides for. So our citizens are paying for a higher level of service on our roadways. That's, I mean, I don't know what the number is, but we can, we can get, we oughta get that from Michael and send that to the commissioners.
And Mayor, one of the benefits of, and one of the main reasons we took this and went big picture on this is we had multiple different vendors, uh, providing services. And, and when you piggyback off contracts, sometimes the scope and some of the quality control, you have to live by that contract. This allowed us to really take that, build the scope exactly to what we need for our city, put it out to the contractors and get the pricing back. So.
Correct.
Okay. Looking for a motion then to approve the.
ITB.
Uh, ITB two thousand twenty-five dash eight dash two-two-five.
Award.
Some award. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez. Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you. Cliff Shepherd, Purdue bankruptcy plan.
As you all probably know, I think most people in the country know, the Purdue Pharma Company, as well as the Sackler family behind the Purdue Pharma Company, is subject to lawsuit, a major lawsuit, class action all over the country for, among other things, uh, opi- opioids like Fentanyl and, um, other, other drugs that people are, uh, get addicted to and have caused lots of death and lots of heartache across the country. And as a result, uh, the class was certified and in fact, it's, there's an attempted settlement of this issue with the Sacklers and with Purdue Pharma, uh, multiple times that have not succeeded, because in one case, a judge threw them out, said the settlement wasn't adequate. Another was that the farm, the family should not be protected in the way they were being protected without coming up with more money, uh, out of their personal stash and so on. So, uh, long story short, uh, I think total of fifty states are participating right now in this, uh, potential settlement. It's potential because it's based on a bankruptcy, which I'm gonna get into in a minute. The proposed bankruptcy plan, which is critical to the settlement, because if the plan is approved, the settlement goes through and the distributions, uh, that I'm about to talk about will get made. And if the settlement does not go through, or if the bankruptcy, the plan does not go through, then the settlement will fall apart and we'll be back at trying to figure out a solution. I say we, the, the people who are involved in litigation. The proposed, uh, bankruptcy plan provides over, uh, eight billion through a four, a fifteen-year payout to resolve opioid, opioid-related claims, including six point five billion from the Sackler family personally. That was one of the things that changed after the last one. Uh, the quote, the court will hold a hearing to consider approval of the plan in November. All the subdivisions, we're a subdivision, uh, here in Apopka, Eatonville and other places same. Uh, all the subdivisions, uh, have, that have submitted a proof of claim, and we did, saying we, we were injured by your, your drugs, are eligible to participate and have an opportunity to vote on the, set, on the bankruptcy plan. Uh, and those are the main features, the amount of money and that it would be distributed over the period of years to all of those who had submitted a claim and agree to participate it and bound by the release. The question has come up, now, can we authorize the lawyer who has represented our subdivision, a fellow named Eric Romano, uh, to accept the plan? Here is his recommendation, quote, "We recommend that you accept the plan. We believe it will maximize the funds available to your subdivision, taking into consideration numerous factors, including the risks of continued litigation, the financial strength of the Purdue companies, and the ability to start providing funds sooner. Accepting the plan will release all claims your subdivision has against Purdue at its affiliated companies and the Sackler family in exchange for your subdivision, uh, receiving its allocated share of the funds." I knew or anticipated the question would be, if not from you all, from the public, how much? No idea. They don't know because it depends on how many people ultimately participate. Notwithstanding that some people will be covered by the settlement, some have not turned in proofs of claim. And so i- the, if they don't respond in a timely way to sign the settlement documents and they don't otherwise participate, then what our number and others gets larger. And the more that participate, the smaller the number gets. And it's not easy to tell at the current date, uh, what that will look like. For Apopka, I assume it'll be what we would consider substantial. But in my world, in Apopka, and given how the bit money is being split, substantial would mean probably six figures, maybe seven, but unknown. That's just a guess by me and it could be less. It's just hard to say. Um, in terms of what happens if we don't approve, we continue to have the right, but it's short-lived, to bring our own lawsuit in the bankruptcy court and cha- and try to get our own judgment. But even then, because it's in bankruptcy court, it's subject to approval of the court and distribution based on funds that are available as an, a non-secured creditor, meaning we don't have anything that we can take from them other than the money that's tied up in the bankruptcy court. So that's the alternative. If you were to decide no and we tell him to vote no, we could still be under the settlement because we elected to file a claim. But if we and enough people vote against the bankruptcy plan, then this settlement falls apart until they can negotiate another.
Any questions for Cliff?
A couple of questions. Thank you for that, that, um, overview of this. Attorney Eric Romano, first time hearing that name, I guess, what's his relationship to us and how does he represent us?
Uh, he represents us because he represents a bunch of subdivisions, uh, like. Like again, I should just say local governments, counties, cities and so forth. And when we filed the proof of claim, he's part of a team of lawyers. He's just happens to be our more local contact, the one that's in Florida. Like for example, I would assume, don't know, never asked him, that if we were a municipality in Massachusetts, it's not his firm, it's another firm. But I think he's got most of, if not all of Florida, or his firm does. Because what happens with these plaintiff firms, they form sort of loosely held coalitions of firms on these massive cases to make sure that all the notices can go out, that we've been receiving, the settlement notices, the proofs of claim and all that stuff. And in return, at the end, not surprisingly, they'll get big fees. But that's their, their role is to cover their territory, which I assume to be just Florida, could be more than that, but it certainly is not the entire country. So they're just one of the firms and happen to be the firm for our area.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that. Last question is, is there, once we receive the funds, is there something specific we have to use that on or can it be used for anything?
Under the terms of the settlement, I think we can use it on anything. I, I'll go back and check that for you and get a definitive answer. The presumption is that it would be used, and that's what the purpose of it, to help offset the costs that has already been invested by this community in dealing with the issues of overdoses and having to provide treatments and various other things. And could fund, if we chose to do that, a rehabilitation program, halfway house, I don't know, there's a number of different ways you can use the money. But again, I think the, the critical question to figure out what we're going to do with it is how much is it going to be? And I don't have big eyes yet because until I know what the money will be, then we could talk about those things in the, in the real world. I, it's just hard to say. If it was a huge number, then obviously there's some, a lot of things we could do, some of them related to how we got here and what we can do to make it better for the people who suffered. But primarily it's to reimburse the governments who have already invested their resources in dealing with the issue.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for Cliff? All right, anybody from the public who should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve. Let's see, what am I, the Purdue bankruptcy plan settlement. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta. Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand one hundred and five.
Ordinance thirty-one oh five. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka comprehensive plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from agriculture and in progress to residential medium low per property owned by Dewar Keane Forty LLC, located at six oh eight West Keane Road, six thirty-two West Keane Road, seven thirty-two West Keane Road and twenty-seven fifty-one Martin Road, comprising thirty-eight point five nine acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes? Okay, anybody from the public who should speak on this?
Again, Leroy Bell. This land, this particular area in Keane Road is one of the most contaminated parts of Apopka. You just got through with the grant committee. You put together a brownfield committee. You have over at the development board, you got one of your cronies, one of your friends sitting, heading up that board, William Gussler, and all he is a troll for you. And you know, in development, especially in a contaminated area, that you have your brownfield board there, that it's studies that need to be done. It's already contaminated down there and I see you got the doors nursery on there and these were one of the entities that you were selling the gas to that was coming off of the landfill, the dump down behind twenty west and left street and Hammond Avenue, Hammond Street. It make no sense. Now they're bringing you a product for you to vote on and the brownfield committee had nothing to do with. They did no research about the runoff. You the one that, man, that got on TV talking about, oh yeah, we got to go deeper in the aquifer. We got, why you got to go deep, deeper in the aquifer? Everywhere over there been kept. Because you got benzene, benzyme and ammonium coming out of the dump right behind the, the Lake Jewel community. And right across, you got another, you got the, you got the medical waste. You also have several more landfills over there that don't have a line or any. And still, still you keep on, you just keep on, just keep on approving this crap over there only, you just showed the people in a few votes back that you don't give a flying hoot about them when you, when you went and approved the water rate. Commissioner Stevenson, I mean, excuse me, I'm thinking about Canada land, but everybody setting up their should though, especially Commissioner Smith, about the contamination over there. You don't care about the people. And still, you got your buddies sitting on these board and stuff without going through due diligence that if, if any commissioner really cared about the people that they could make a, a educated vote on it, you're sorry.
Rod Olson, this comes to two hundred and eighty-nine units or a hundred and seventeen students. I ask two things, one, the aspect of, I believe it's probably far enough from schools, it doesn't have walking. If it is, depending upon where in Keane Road, it may have walking distance to make sure there's a sidewalk connecting them to the schools. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I found out tonight that we got a traffic engineer on, got hired, if I'm mistaken. Guys, we got, I mean, the traffic's horrible. I was eating breakfast the other morning and at eight fifteen, four forty-one southbound was backed up from Park Avenue, all the way down past to Bradshaw. Two lanes full. About that time Orange County Fire Rescue coming down, heading south. It's a long way for them to, to stage or whatever they're going to. But anyway, I said watch for three minutes of them just trying to get around cars. We got a lot of traffic studies that need to be done. Guys, y'all are putting more and more people on the road and Pond Can Road, Fort Silver with, there's three schools right there that little kids walk to. And y'all are getting ready to dump a thousand new residents right there in that area. It's, it's, it's acid, I mean, it's just stupid.
Anybody else from public? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing.
I do have a question of the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioner Logan, Opsol two one five North Yola Drive.
Appreciate you being here. The, I think I'd asked this last meeting, I just want to double check and confirm, the, have you done any type of phase one environmental assessment? If so, have you found any contaminants, any issues of concerns, anything like that?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up and I had that in my notes as well. You, you did ask that question and some of the other commissioners had some great questions as well. We have conducted a phase one and it came back clean. Yeah, thank you. Just if I may, Mr. Mayor, we heard about schools and thank you for those comments. Appreciated the opportunity last time to talk about those, all the questions that this body had. We have school concurrency determination. When we look at traffic on Keane Road, I, I, we know there's improvements happening just to the, to the west of us as we speak. And I, I also understand Keane's a priority for the city, so we're looking at that. Part of this project is, is dedicating portions of our frontage to, to, to help with that project. So appreciate those comments, those things, especially sidewalk, we can look at those, that road project will be considered as well. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Are you able to send that phase one to us at all for review?
Sure.
The environmental, yeah, because that was the note that I made from the first reading that you were in the process of an environmental for phase one. Is that completed?
It is completed, yes. It came back clean and we're happy to provide that as part of our patch. Excellent, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one oh five.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one oh six.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh six. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from AG agriculture and T transitional to RMF residential multifamily for property located at six oh eight West Keane Road, six thirty-two West Keane Road, seven thirty-two West Keane Road and twenty-seven fifty-one Martin Road, owned by Dewar Keane Forty LLC, comprising thirty-eight point five nine acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one?
Yeah, Rod Olson, this is the same property. This is example of, again, if you have between the planning committee, commission and this, this is, if you separate out the land use development and the zoning buys us three to six weeks delaying all this development you keep approving one time after another. You should be more resident, current resident sensitive than developer sensitive. Thank you.
My problem's not with the developer or their legal representatives here. My problem is we just, we keep on and keep on. Y'all said y'all can't do no moratoriums. You can, other cities are doing it. You don't have the infrastructure out there to, to handle that big stuff. You can stop temporarily, you can't, you're not going to stop it totally, but you can put the brakes on it for a little bit. And then the, I guess the last, last meeting or the meeting before last, down at old Apopka Clerk on the road. And I mean, Clerc, O'Coyle Apopka Road and Keane Road there, there was a five acre tract y'all approved for commercial building, I think, to handle that area. And y'all asked somebody, asked them about the hundred year flood claim. And they said, oh, it passed the test and everything else. Well, then it turned around and said it passed it so good, we want to take one more acre of that and put on the roof also. Well, it just changed the whole outcome of the flood. Watersheds off of these roofs, watershed off of the asphalt parking areas is going where? It's going to dry ponds right now at your building and hopefully they'll hold the water that comes. But in that water comes all of those chemicals off of asphalt, off of cars, off ag trucks that's sitting there, turf trucks that are sitting there. Oh, I'm asking, y'all, y'all are so fast, rubber stamp things, so fast.
Sylvester Hall, we always talking about, you know, following procedures. Mr. Bell asked about the land use inspection. Now, when you come here, you expect that will already be in front of you guys. We shouldn't have to ask for that. It should have been laid out, you should already have that. Uh, when you're talking about the traffic inspection, you should already have that. This is what we talked about before, doing our due diligence to make sure that we're looking out for the city. And we worried about workshop for grant programs, but we haven't had a workshop yet to try to get in front of this infrastructure issue that we have. So where's our priority? Where's our concern for the things that need to be taken care of? I don't have anything against the developer, but when you come here, have your ducks in order. Those are mandatory things and those are priority things that we should see before we even move forward in doing anything because it's all about the safety for the city. So why you don't have that report here, why we got to ask for it and get it later on? When we're in the, what, second reading? And we still, we don't have this in front of you guys and we still moving forward? We don't have the traffic. What Mr. Olson is talking about all the time about the schools and everything? So you know, when you say make it make sense, make it make sense, we trying to give you the respect, but make it make sense. So when we talked about getting a consultant, Mayor, you said we already have one. Well, if you had one, he would have already told you, hey, look, those things should have been brought before you. So stop treating this, the, the community and the residents like Boo Boo the Fool. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Albert McKemay, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. It's rather disheartening to come here week after week and find that you guys don't have the information that you should have in front of you. I see it as a landowner who's been trying to get developed for the last four years, but I still am getting nowhere with the city. I'm through fourteen iterations of plans. So it would appear to me that the city, when they want to delay you, can find reasons to delay you. But when you're their buddies, they push things and things get done overnight.
Anybody else? I don't know if the applicant you want to come up, you're good. Okay. Okay. All right. Looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one oh six.
We approved it before. Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one twenty-five.
Ordinance number thirty-one twenty-five. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka comprehensive plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county low density to city residential low suburban for certain real property loan owned by Palucci Acres LLC, located on the east side of Bick Road, approximately a quarter of a mile north of the intersection of Bick Road and West Lester Road, comprising of thirty-nine point eight five acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes Bobby? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one?
I want to go back to the soil sampling. You've got to do it there, which that was a grove for years and years should be sampled. So it's a cattle ranch in that area there. The thing is, when the people go out and do soil samples and check for chemicals and stuff, who says I'd like to have one in this section, one in this section, one here. Those guys go out and just do one real quick and do the sample and they're out. They don't, they don't know where it's going to where or anything else. There's no, there's no rhyme or reason of why they picked that spot to do a soil sample. It's like D P requires application land sites, you have got the twenty-eight inches above of groundwater to apply. You think the farmers going out and find the highest hill and put the pipe? Yes. But the D P likes to see it down in low areas too. Well, I'm saying who's got, who sets the guidelines for these samples to be done? And once again, I'm not against the doers selling their property and I guess their lawyer here, but we need to have some type of control over something. We have none, none at all.
Anybody else?
Rod Olson, this equates to a hundred and thirty-nine units or another fifty-six students when you add to the current and the meter's still running Palucci Acres. when you add to the current and the meter's still running Palucci Acres, that's five hundred new students. As you recall, the Wolf Lake Campus just last year removed forty-one of the forty-six trailers on campus. This equates to another twenty-five trailers coming back on. Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one twenty-five. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number thirty-one twenty-six.
Ordinance number thirty-one twenty-six. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential low suburban to commercial for certain real property owned by Palucci Acres LLC, located on the south side of Pond Can Road, west of the intersection of Jason Dwelly Parkway and Pond Can Road, comprising five, five thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Okay, any changes? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, Sylvester, just to make sure I'm clear so I don't speak out of turn. But, uh, it's a residential area, we change it into commercial, right? Okay, now, I live in Rock Springs Ridge. You got thirteen hundred and twenty residents over there. When we changing this to commercial, I think they would want to know what are we proposing to put in those areas? You already heard previously, we don't care nothing about infrastructure. So I want to know what is it? Because if you changing it to commercial, you have some idea of what you want to put there. You don't just come here and say, I want to change it to commercial. So be straight up front and let us know, let the residents know what you plan on putting there. That way they can come out and say, hey, I'm for it, I'm against it. But don't just sneak it in here because you know too many people ain't watching. Because soon as I find out all thirteen hundred and twenty residents of Rock Springs Ridge are going to know who supported and who didn't. So all I'm simply asking is let us know what you plan on putting there. You don't come here to say, hey, change it from resident to commercial for no reason at all. So just be straight up front, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I don't know if the applicant wanted to come down, I know, talking about the, some of the uses.
So I just, I did have a meeting with, um, Luke Klassen, who's the engineer, and that was a result of an email that I forwarded, sharing the concerns that were presented, that were actually expressed at the last council meeting. I also expressed from my own personal, because I do live in Rock Springs Ridge, and I expressed that I had some concerns about where that commercial property and, and you then forwarded a list of some of the proposed, um, commercial use for that area. And then, um, I actually did sit down with, uh, Luke Klassen where he provided that there was some, uh, improvements to the infrastructure before you actually returned dirt in this corner.
That is correct. Uh, good evening, everyone. Lisa Sowell, three hundred South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three two eight zero one.
Can you just speak a little louder?
Yes, can you hear me better now? Okay, so do you need me to repeat that or we good? We're good. All right, so we do have permitted uses. Um, Commissioner, you had mentioned that we had provided some of the permitted uses for this commercial parcel and those are the list of the permitted uses for the commercial parcel. It will be very restricted to neighborhood, uh, commercial friendly uses and I do have that list that I can share with you all this evening. So since I have a little presentation, I might as well just touch base with you all. Uh, this, um, area in red is the parcel that we are discussing this evening. It is approximately just five acres, uh, for future neighborhood commercial, uh, development. The permitted uses for the commercial parcel south of Ponkin Road are here and they are listed. This is pulled from in a very limited, um, selection from what is in the city's neighborhood commercial zoning district.
And thank you for that and, and thank you for taking the time because again, this was one of my biggest hiccups last meeting is I need a list. Give me something of what this looks like. So to, to confirm, this isn't just an example, this is the maximum uses you're allowed to use there.
Yes, for this commercial parcel that we are talking about, this is the list. We are at a, we're, um, in front of you this evening is a future land use amendment for the map to change from residential to commercial, but in connection with the rezoning application that will be before you, this is the list we have committed and we are now of record, um, committing to this permitted use restriction.
So any other, any other questions for the applicant? Everybody good with the, the list? Okay, all right. With that, close the public hearing, look for motion to approve, uh, ordinance number thirty-one twenty-six.
Um, some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next up, city council reports. Commissioner Velazquez, why don't you get us started?
First, I just want to kind of again say, um, wish our community, actually everyone a happy Hispanic month until October fifteenth. Um, earlier today, I went to, um, our president of the Apopka Museum organized a symposium of all the central Florida museums. Uh, Commissioner Nesta was in attendance and it was very well attended. Um, it was about four hours long, but it was ver-, was, it was very informative to hear how all the museums and the cities really concentrate on the history of their city and how they're, um, kind of building their museum to kind of reflect their history of the city and also even as it's, as the cities are growing, how they are incorporating their history into the growth of their city. So that was, it was a very informative, um, meeting that I went to. Um, of course, we get the Apopka newsletter, the utility, I'm constantly reminding our residents to read it and not to put it in the garbage. So the next fourth annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration will be at Kitland Nelson Park. Um, also it, it, um, talks about the strategic planning. Where is it? The strategic planning, it doesn't say it in this one, the latest one. Okay, I'm sorry, it doesn't, when is the strategic planning? It doesn't say it in this one.
I think it's tomorrow, is the internet, she gone?
Yeah.
Um, I know it's coming up, it's the next couple of days, it's, we're, we're going to close it.
And then, uh, it, when, it should be closed the end of this month.
Yeah, I think it's the next couple of days, but, but anyway.
And then we have, uh, of course, the, uh, Saturday songs will be returning on October fourth and if you go on the website, it already has all the, uh, performances that will be in October and November, because I did see that. And then we have saved the date for Halloween in the park, which is the end of October, uh, October twenty-fifth from ten o'clock to twelve PM. And that's pretty much it that I forward right now. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Anderson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nesta?
Uh, yes, just, uh, consistent reminder of my, uh, weekly office hours, they're every Thursday here at City Hall from eleven AM to one PM. Um, I am meeting with residents, I, it's very cool, it's very successful, the new residents that are coming in to meet with me, a new ideas. If for any reason you're uncomfortable to meet at City Hall, um, inside this building, I'm happy to accommodate otherwise, just reach out and I will meet with you, uh, when your schedule allows and mine does as well. So that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Just want to encourage everyone to come out on Saturday to this Thanksgiving celebration, make it in Nelson Park and have a great time.
Four to eight, four to eight, so come on out. All right, Bradley?
Just a couple items of information. Our community development department did receive the, uh, land appraisal back for the Duke property at two oh five East Eighth Street. Uh, it appraised at a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. So again, just item of information, uh, at the next CRA meeting, we'll also bring this forward for discussion with the CRA board to see if there's any interest in, uh, moving forward on that property. Uh, we are nearing.
Well, on, on that note, I mean, I want to make sure everybody's still good because I, I, I want to do is, I don't want Duke sitting waiting and all of a sudden they pop up a sign. So if we're good, I at least want to say we'd like to, to, um, um, show our interest in that property, so we.
Is that the one that we're considering?
Can we have a copy of that appraisal please?
Is that the one?
Sure, yes, I can email it to the appraisal.
Correct. Okay. That's the parcel that we're considering for.
Resource center. Yeah, so we're all good, I, I'd, I'd like to.
I would want to review the copy of the appraisal first before I, I just wanted to view it first.
Yeah, I can email it to you. I can email it to you.
Yeah, and then, I mean, if we're doing a resource center there, I just want to see a cohesive plan of, okay, we're buying it and then the next steps moving forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, and then we are nearing completion of the Northwest Recreation Complex, uh, new exit roadway, which is in, uh, tandem with the inclusive playground project. So I'll be reaching out shortly to look at calendars for a grand opening of the playground. So we're excited, uh, here sometime in October. And that's it.
Thank you, Bradley. Cliff?
I have nothing, sir.
All right, cool, all right. Last but not least, um, just, um, a couple of things here. Uh, residential facade grant, we're, we're making progress there. Um, our, Aunt Trapp Forbes had two TV interviews, so it was cool to see her on TV talking about the, the, uh, residential facade grant program. So I think the, the exposure is getting out there and hopefully we'll get a, a bunch of folks to, um, there she is, just talking about you. Just talking about that you had two enter TV interviews and that, uh, facade grant program is, is looking good, so thank, thumbs up, appreciate it. Yes. Yes, okay. Uh, Hispanic Heritage, um, Celebration Saturday at, uh, Kitland Nelson Park, four to eight on Saturday. Um, next up, we've got a couple, a couple of kind of cool things coming up on, uh, we have City Hall's, uh, Centennial Celebration. So for y'all that didn't know this, um, City Hall was built in nineteen twenty-five. So we're going to have a celebration here at, at the, in the front of City Hall, um, six o'clock on October third, so we're going to kind of marry it with the, um, the Friday night, you know, um, event down on Fifth Street. So what we'd like to do is, you know, we'd like to unveil the, the plaque at six o'clock here at City Hall and then walk down to the Fifth Street Markets and, uh, finish our celebration. We've got, uh, the museum along with, uh, the, uh, the lodge, you're going to put together some displays, some pictures from back in the day, so it's going to be, should be a really cool, uh, event, so come out and be a part of, of the City Hall's Centennial Celebration. And then last but not least, on the fourth, so the next day, so October fourth, we're doing a, a high school band fundraiser at the Fifth Street, um, area. And what we're trying to do is raise money, as we all know, um, not only Wakava, you know, Wakava's going to New Orleans for the Christmas, uh, holidays and, um, uh, Apopka High School's going to London and so obviously need all the money they can get, so we're trying to help any way we can. So they're going to have a, probably a couple of jazz bands from each, one from each, each school playing down there, trying to raise some money to help, help them with their, their overall costs. And with that.